So, welcome everybody to the zoning board of appeals meeting for the village of Tuckahoe for Wednesday, June the 10th, 2020. First order of business will be the approval of the minutes of the May 13th meeting, 2020. Have all the members had a chance to take a look at it?
Yes.
Revised ones, correct?
Revised ones.
Revised one, yeah. All right, I forgot one important thing. Nancy, please take the roll call.
Okay, I have member Jackman.
Here.
Garity.
Present.
Member Palladino.
Present.
Oh, did I do the wrong thing? Member Fiori, you there?
Right, yep, I'm here.
There you go, I'm sorry. And chairman Ringwald?
I'm here.
And that's it, I have Scalzo is not here?
No, he's not here, thank you.
Okay, perfect.
All right, back to the approval of the minute. So, does anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes for the May 13th, 2020 meeting?
Make a motion.
Sorry.
Back in.
Nancy, please pull the ball.
I'm sorry, who was, oh, John was the second? Okay, second John. Okay, member Jackman.
Approved.
Member Garity.
Approved.
Member Palladino.
Approved.
Member Fiori.
Approved.
And chairman Ringwald.
Approved.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, the one and only item we have is 216 Dante Avenue, looking for a new addition for a mudroom. If you see that the applicant is present, if you would please state why it is that you're in front of us?
Yes, we're, we're looking to build a mudroom addition on the side of our house that would be the most useful for entering, based on the staircase that we have now. We feel like this is the house that we want to stay in, to raise our kids in, and we think this would just be useful for our day-to-day life, between having small children and having our elderly parents come by a lot. It would help reduce the number of steps to come into the house and just make it a more livable place for the long run for a family.
Do you want me to give a specifics?
Yeah. Anybody have any questions on the board? Anybody from the board have questions?
I think we should have the architect describe the project as well, correct?
Okay. The proposed project is a 72 square foot mudroom addition. It's seven foot nine wide by nine foot, seven feet deep. It sits 5.1 feet from the property line and the requested variance is for 3.9 feet. The addition is only going to be a one-story addition and all the materials and everything like that will be in keeping with the materials of the home. Therefore, it'll be in keeping also with the neighborhood as well. We have explored options to locate this mudroom elsewhere. One obvious option would be to locate it within the home, say specifically within the basement, that's not an option due to the existing height of the basement, ceiling height of the basement, it's not conforming to code. We've looked to locate it on the south side of the property. Due to the topography of the property, that option would require much more extensive construction, both by requiring it to be at least a two-story structure, requiring additional retaining walls, additional walkways, staircases, et cetera, in order to both access the addition itself and to access the second or the main level of the house. By locating the mudroom in the proposed location, there is an existing walkway to that area, the area is already a patio area, and there would be very little increased impervious area to the site. The walkway itself would be improved, there'd be new railings, new landscaping, which would improve obviously the outside of the property and also improve the aesthetics of that side of the house as well, as it's currently very, not very utilized, and it would be better maintained, obviously. Additionally, currently there is a door that leads out from the existing kitchen of the house, which faces directly to the property owner to the north. By adding the addition, this would provide more privacy to the property owner in that they wouldn't be looking directly into the kitchen any longer, and as the door would now be facing to the west and towards the street.
Bill Williams have a question. So, Ms. Fox stated that the basement wasn't, the ceiling wasn't high enough. What is the requirement for a ceiling, ceiling height for her to put the, say, mudroom in the basement?
Well, it's not even so much the ceiling, well, the ceiling height has to be 80 inches, right? And, and then you're allowed to go down to six foot four with duck work and things like that. But the staircase itself also isn't compliant in the existing house either, and so that would require modification as well, because now you would be, you know, using it more readily.
You agree with that, Bill? Bill?
Tom?
Tom, go ahead, I couldn't hear you.
There you go.
Did you hear Ms. Fox's explanation? I was asking you about the ceiling height in the basement, why they couldn't put the mudroom in the basement.
She's correct on the ceiling heights.
All right, thank you.
And Tom, you might also want to say that the board has received multiple letters related to the application?
Yeah, we'll get to that. I mean, anybody else have any other questions? I mean, I'm trying to help these folks out, I'd love to see them be able to do this, and honestly, I just don't see why it can't go on the other side. I know it's a bit of a burden that you have to put two stories there, but you are literally on top of the other person's property with this request.
Right, I think financially it would, it would not be doable on the other side for us, apart from the, all the, the extensive construction that it would be on that side, I think. You know, the other aspect for us is that we wouldn't be able to afford to build that.
Right, fair enough.
I got one question. Where's, where proposed addition location, is that could be built on a slab or is it going to be dug in? I don't know.
No, it'll be on a slab.
On a slab?
Anybody else? Okay, any other comments, Ms. Fox or Ms. Donnelly?
Um, said what we need to say.
All right.
Yeah, if there is, guys, that would be, that would be more workable for you for a variance, then we're, we're certainly open to that as well.
All right. We're going to make a motion.
Sorry, you mean even on that side, even on the side, because it's, I mean, the building as it exists is about nine or 10 feet, correct?
Uh, we have more than nine foot.
I think you have like 13 and a half foot on that side, isn't it Stephanie?
I'm sorry, what's the question? Could you repeat the question?
You're, you're referring to, if you can do something on that side, you're essentially asking what's the minimum amount you can get away with, correct?
Right, if there's something that's, you know, less than seven foot nine inches, that would be more palatable, we'd certainly happy to consider that.
The problem is, I mean, then it's just getting super small for you guys and just not, you're going to be spending a lot of money for something that I, you know, if you're getting down to a mudroom that's small, at some point it's coming to, you know, usability versus.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, but at the same point, you know, building on the other side would be so much more expensive, so if we can get enough room to like essentially put a mudroom there, then we would be open to discussing that.
Right, I think we could, you know, still with maintaining a nine-foot distance from the property line, I think we could build something that was only four feet wide, so if we could just get something that we could put in, an extra coat rack, we would, we would certainly consider it.
And maybe if it's the nine feet, then you don't even have to be in front of us.
That's correct.
You don't need a variance then.
Right, we were asking if there was anything in between what we could do with no variance and what, you know, what we submitted, which if you're saying that's, that's too close, then we're, we're open to hearing what you, if you have any other opinions.
I mean, the problem is the nine feet is, you know, if you pace off nine feet to someone's property line, your, your neighbor has, I think, every right to expect that new structure shouldn't be built closer than, than that space, because that's, and that, you know, the current code for a new structure, if you build a whole new house right now, how far does the house need to be from the property line, Bill?
Nine feet.
No, on a new, on a new plot.
Fifteen.
Fifteen feet, Bill?
We don't have any new plots to land, all the existing plots.
Point that if you built a new building, 15 feet is the minimum we would accept for a property to be from the line. So, your existing structure, which of course is what happens here in Tuckahoe, is all these homes are so close together, the nine feet is already close that we're allowing based on the age of the property. And then, you know, you're going even closer than the nine feet, so nine feet, again, speaking for myself personally, not the board, the nine feet is, I think, kind of the minimum we can accept, because it's just, any closer is just really close. And your neighbor has the right, as a property owner, to kind of expect that space around his property.
Nathan, that 15 feet on the side yard would be required on a much larger piece of property, not a piece this size. A piece this size is only required in nine-foot side yard.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
I think that's an unfair statement, sir, to say that nine feet is expected. The purpose of the zoning board of appeals is to consider applications for less than nine feet, so.
Yeah, I would agree with Stephanie, and you know, I know personally I'd be willing to, you know, to give a couple of feet off the nine for a pre-existing condition such as this. It's not, it's not a brand-new lot or whatever, so, you know, it's nine feet, let's not talk about the 15. For them, it's nine feet. So, if they were looking for a foot or two, that's one thing, but you're, you're going down to five feet, you're getting really close.
Right, so again, we'd, we'd be willing to hear what would be more acceptable, what would be more acceptable for you. Yeah, we understand that all the properties, you know, I think we're one of the only ones that currently has more than nine feet on both sides of our block.
No, I have the same thing up the block.
Right, we're all, we're all pretty cozy together here. So, yeah, if there's something that is more palatable for you guys, then we're certainly open to considering that.
Well, I think you heard a few of us say, you know, try to put it on the other side, and I recognize that it's going to cost you a lot more money, it's, it'll be two levels or whatever, but, you know, off the top, you know, after looking, I, I can't personally think of anything else, you know, any other alternative than to put it on the other side. Maybe Carolina or Bill or somebody can help us out here, I, I don't know.
Right, and not just for other locations, but also anything in terms of something between the no variance and the variance that we requested.
Just, so you know where I stand, it would be nine feet for me, and I think Tom said, you know, he'd give you a couple of feet, so it'd be seven feet for him. I'm not sure if Chris and John want to clarify, as well as Mr. Fiori?
Hey Nathan, hey guys, I think you did tell, hear the other side of the story, you may want to hear the public before, you know, you, you give concessions, because there might be things that we're missing out there, we're not, we don't know about what their position is.
I don't think we're giving any concessions, they're just asking us a question, and I think, you know, we're just.
Asked during the, the work session, that side seems to be, the neighbor is different levels, okay, all right, and it does, even though the houses are close together, and I understand that, my house is one foot from the property line, you know, that's the way they built it, you know what I mean? But I didn't see any access into the neighbor's house there, and I really didn't see any, how should I say, windows or anything else like that there, and I asked if it was used by the neighbors. In other words, that, that piece of property, okay, did they use it at all, all right? Just a thought.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, I agree on that too.
I have a suggestion, any minor work, but it's a suggestion, like you were saying. So, I understand what you explained, it can be frustrating, because you need the mudroom and you mentioned your, your parents will have, who need the easier access to your home, right? So, with that said, the new walk to replace the existing still can be done. Can you guys hear me properly? Is it? Okay, so that is not an issue, because that doesn't interfere with the setback that needs to be done, correct, Stephanie? That you can still work on the, the walk that you suggested, the new walk to replace existing, that doesn't interfere with the setback, and you have the door there, but what you could do, you could use the current area as part of your existing kitchen, and you have the door there, that could become your mudroom somehow, the existing structure, and then where you have existing patio could be part of your kitchen, that's an idea. You could even relocate the door and that wall.
Yes, sorry to interrupt, but, you know, we, when we moved to this house, we completely gutted the kitchen, I mean, I'm sure Bill is aware of it, and, and we rebuilt the kitchen, that was the first thing we did when we moved to this house. So, essentially, we'll have to basically, you know, gut the kitchen, which we just built like three years ago.
That doesn't make sense, you don't want to do that. Yeah, but maybe you create something like a vestibule, as Margaret was saying, if she needed at least a place to hang her coat, it might be a way to incorporate it, even if you don't touch your kitchen, if you're in the area to be.
Yeah, I mean, as, as I think, I think Mr. Nathan was saying, that, you know, that the fact that, you know, we have a few feet there, and what we're trying to figure out is, if we can get a few more feet, you know, whatever is palatable to you guys, then, you know, we can adjust the size, even then, it's going to be very expensive, but a lot cheaper than building it on the other side. That was, that was our thought.
And even building it on the other side would not help so much the access portion of it, because then you would really have yet another full staircase up, so then you'd be, you know, right now, I think that they have, I think I counted 23 steps up to the front door from the curb. So, now we're talking about somehow accessing another area of the first floor with yet at least another 23 steps. So, I understand what Carol, Carolina is saying, by saying that, I guess we could somehow do a 50/50 with improving the walkway and still going into the kitchen, but the point is, is that you would want, you would want the access to, you know, a mudroom space, so then, you know, I mean, maybe, you know, you provide a walkway and then more stairs and then into a, into a new structure, and then more stairs up to the first floor, so I think we're still, I, I'm not, I'm not sure we're.
Right, to our minds.
That way either.
Yeah, least intrusive way sort of of doing it, it's not visible from the street and it, you know, square footage-wise in terms of new build, it's very small, and as Stephanie said, it's already a patio sort of area, it's not like we'd be taking away lawn and garden space.
Yeah, and very helpful for my in-laws, especially my mother-in-law, who complains about the number of steps every time she comes in.
Welcome to Tuckahoe.
Any other comments?
Just for the sake of the argument, Tom and Bill, how big of a deal would it be to allow them, a variance, to build this into the basement, considering the basement's non-conformity?
But then you're still going up another flight of steps, that's what they're trying to avoid, like I went into the basement.
I would have to get a variance from the state in order to do that.
From the state?
Yes.
Really, Bill, from the state?
From the state, yes, for ceiling height. And Erica Krieger doesn't come out to your home anymore, it's all done through Albany.
Correct, you need a variance from the state.
What's that? Yeah, I need a, because it's, it's now, it's no longer in the building department's hands, because it's not, it's, it's, it's a violation of the state building code, it's not a violation of the Village of Tuckahoe building code, or Village of Tuckahoe code. So, now I need a variance from the state department in order to do that.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding the request for a variance for 216 Dante Avenue?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, James Scalise, 670 White Plains Road, Scarsdale, New York, 10583, for the neighbors at 218 Dante Avenue. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. You hopefully have received our submission to the board in opposition to this. I want to make it clear that my clients would like to be neighborly, they understand what the applicant is trying to do, but for the reasons that were set forth in our submission, we do not believe that the applicant meets the criteria for the area variance. And I've laid it out, if you'd like, I could go through it, but I think it's pretty self-sufficient, what's been, what's been put there. These, these houses are very close together at this area, particularly my clients, and we're going to get down to a very short distance between these two houses. And there is one thing that, that one of the members of the zoning board mentioned that I apologize, I can't remember who mentioned it, but although my clients don't use the side yard a lot, they do from time to time, but more importantly, their kitchen does look out over this side yard, and this, since this will be used for ingress and egress, and it's going to be so close, it is an issue for my client, for my clients, obviously. We certainly believe, we've heard a lot of things about whether or not they could build on the other side, we believe that would be a more feasible alternative, as we laid out in our opposition to this application. I've heard some comments by the boards with respect to this application, that they have some concerns about how small the space would be if they were able to build in that area, and that is a real concern to, to my clients, that they're going to be so close here. We do believe that it would be feasible to put it on the other side, or as an alternative to maybe shorten this, although that may not work for them, to be able to shorten or lessen the, the area of a mudroom. As much as my clients and everybody, I think, on the board recognize how nice it would be to have a mudroom here, based upon the way these structures are built and next to each other, we think that this one here just does not work, and we don't think that it would be in keeping with the five-prong test for the zoning board to grant the variance. I'm certainly willing to answer any questions, if any of the board members have any, or anybody else.
Yeah, I have a question. So, it sounded to me like you implied that if the room was smaller, it would be acceptable to you and your client, so what size room would you think would be acceptable on that side of the house?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I believe what we're talking about here is, it was almost if in keeping with the amount of, I'm looking at a, at a side yard picture that I had submitted there where the door, I would say just a couple feet. Now, I don't think that that then makes it, it works for the applicant, I'm not here on behalf of the applicant, but it may not even work if it was two or three feet less than what they're asking for. But then again, I'm not the applicant here, but the, what they're proposing here is just too, too large, Mr. Chairman.
No, I, you know, I understand, but, you know, to, to make the, the, to assume that maybe if they went down to two feet, it would be acceptable, I mean, come on, a two-foot mudroom is useless.
And, and so let, so let me, and I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, because you know what, let me say, the reality here, as much as we would like to try to be accommodating and be neighborly here, the reality is, it doesn't work as is, so thank you.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
I have a question. I am not privy to any of the information that Mr. Scalise submitted, how do you expect me to respond?
Well, what happens here is that's, this meeting's going to be carried over to next meeting, so we'll have the public hearing open. We just got those letters, so you can call the building department tomorrow, and we'll have Mary Ann email them to see if they have all the letters. I think we're, we're still missing some, Bill, too, right? Weren't there, we only got three, but I think there was more coming? I think Jim, your letter may have referred to more letters coming?
Now, my understanding is that in addition to my letter, and my client had submitted a letter, that there was at least one or two other letters that were coming from the neighbors.
Gary, I don't know, I wasn't in today, I was out.
Okay, so at least you can get the letters that we have, we can get those to you tomorrow morning, and if any letters come in, we can have Mary Ann send them to you as soon as she gets them, and distribute some amongst the board. Again, the way our process works is that we're going to keep this open, this public hearing open for the next month, so we'll be able to take into consideration anyone who comes in here, and your guys' response, if you'd like to respond to those letters.
Okay, thank you.
And can I clarify, when, when you were mentioning two feet, is that two feet of a variance or a two-foot wide room? Because as it is, I think we have four feet that we could build without, yeah, without any variance, so are we discussing like taking two feet off the four feet that we're asking for, just to, because I was a little bit confused about that statement?
Oh, which side?
Um, so, from the drawings that we submitted, was the suggestion that we make it two feet narrower than that drawing?
I think the attorney suggested that nothing, no variance is acceptable. And, and thank you for clarifying that, as, as much as, as I've said, my clients would like to be neighborly, we don't see this working in any way. If, if they are, are doing it as a right, there's nothing we can do about it, but we don't believe a variance would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Stephanie, maybe you can clarify for everyone with a copy showing your addition alongside with the neighbor's house on the property line, so that they get a better idea on how far away it is?
Absolutely, I can take that information from the survey and juxtapose, juxtapose, you know, put it onto my, my flipper.
All right, thanks.
So, I, I want to be clear with that question, Bill, are you asking her to put the mudroom on the other side of the house, or did I miss something?
No, what I was asking for her to show the neighbor on, on the side where the mudroom is, so you can see relationship, how far their house is away from the mudroom and the side property.
I think I got it.
Not that from the drawings, no? The drawings we already received.
The only drawing I had didn't show the neighbor's house on the property.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm looking at the property line, you're right.
If we already have it, then I'll check it tomorrow when I go in the office.
You know how far, how far the neighbor is from their property line?
You can see it on the site plan, and, and then the, the neighbor at 218 Dante Avenue, as per the survey, is 6.7 feet from the common property line.
Okay, I'll take a look at it in the morning.
Okay, that's close.
So, the neighbor doesn't even meet the current variance.
It's not as close as John's house, though.
No.
All right, so, any other questions from board members or anyone at the meeting?
Not at this point.
No.
No, I'm good for now.
All right, I think... Go ahead.
I was just wondering if there was anything we should consider in terms of asking for something that's, you know, a foot less, or two feet less. I don't know if that would, if that would be helpful for the next time.
The members?
If there's anything that we could, that we could change to, to make it, you know, more acceptable to people.
Personally, put it on the other side. I know it's more expensive, and it's onerous, and it's two stories, but...
Right. I don't think we would submit that just because it's not something that we would be able to, that we would be able to...
I understand.
Hi, this is a neighbor at 218 Dante Avenue, Saka Tyroco. If I may add some comments on building on the other side, if you will. I heard some comments about the number of steps here. If I may share the screen to everybody, I'm not allowed to share the screen. Do you mind? I have a picture.
Gary, is he allowed to share his screen during the meeting? You're muted, Gary.
He's muted. Hi, Gary, you're...
You're still muted, Gary.
Sorry, yeah, we, if you'd like to pull up a picture of the chair, and you guys are okay with it, you can see it, whatever he's referring to. If he's at the meeting, he'd be able to show you. Unfortunately, with this thing, he can't, so...
No, you just have to enable it. He can't do it right.
Yeah, I don't know how to enable it.
So where the green button is that says "share screen"?
Yeah, it says "host disabled participants".
And it says "advanced options"? It says "who can share their screen"? You can add anyone.
Okay. So I got an advanced, I got...
Should say, second option should be "who can share their screen"? You should be able to click on "anyone" or "only host".
We'll share down there.
Oops, you're sharing the screen.
You're sharing? I said, "share".
I see a nice blue zoom. That is great.
What'd you do to me?
Um, okay, let me try to, to see if I can, uh, you have any...
Everything's on the side now.
Oh, jeez.
All right.
All right, the gentleman's on the screen, yeah?
Am I good to go?
Can you, can you hold it up? Can you, can you hold it up from where you are and just show us?
I think it's on computer, Gary.
It's on my computer.
On his computer.
Oh, it's on his computer.
Yeah, that's why he needs to share the screen.
Let me try that again.
So there, there should be a little up arrow besides the, the green button that says "advanced options". Who can share screen? Only, only host or all participants?
It's not giving me that. The advanced says "portion of screen, music, or computer sound only", or "content from second camera".
You must not have that option. Don't know.
Yeah.
Is someone on the host?
Well, he can...
He's on the host. But it's not giving me that option to share.
If he wants, he could submit it to the building department.
Right, yeah, so, so, okay, let, let me go straight to my point. Without the picture, I'll try my best to...
Yeah, Gary, I was going to suggest that he submit it to the building department, and we'll scan it and send it to everybody.
Sounds good.
That, that's fine. So, so just coming back to my point, because, because I hear a, a couple of comments regarding the number of step flights that, you know, an elderly or a kid has to, has to step up. Certainly, if you go from the front door, it's 20-something steps, as Stephanie perhaps mentioned. But coming back to, to the other side of the, of the house toward the 212 Dante Avenue, if, tomorrow I'll send you a picture of Google Map, where you can see on that side what's going on. So you're going to see that, you know, the stair is actually starting from the, from the basement side, which already, you already go up the lawn from, you know, which take you over the, the, the parking lot or the driveway already. So, so on that side, there is a step there, and there is certainly less number of steps that would take you up to the, to the first level, and, and it would take you right to the, to the patio, right? So I understand that there's some construction that has to be, has to be done. But I think, like, it, 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 it doesn't appear to me that, you know, going through the front of the property and have to go the other side way in, on my side is, is going to be a better solu, solution than that either. Because if you look at net, net, the number of flight steps, that is, is, is much shorter. And there is a nicer grass that, if you were to do the landscape nicely, I believe, you, you, you can somewhat make it happen. So, but that would just be my, my view. I'll leave, I'll leave the rest to you, but, but tomorrow, I'm going to submit this picture again.
I'm sorry, Stephanie, I think already explained all the cons of building up the other side, not to mention how expensive it's going to be, I guess, the board, which got all the details about it. Thank you.
And right, I think the steps that are being referred to are just a set of, like, open outdoors, steps to a patio, not, not an actual staircase, as no earth under it. It's just a free-floating set of stairs.
Yeah, I think Stephanie gave a detailed description of the other side and all the problems with that. Thank you.
I mean, I understand what he's saying, but in order to actually get up to that basement level, say from street level, we'll first need to create a staircase for that, because, you know, you're not going to say walk up, I think we've already addressed, even though Mr. Ringwall doesn't agree with the driveway, but, you know, you're not going to walk up the driveway to get to the mudroom. We'll have to create a set of stairs, say from street, from sidewalk level, right? And then another set of stairs from, say, basement level, so to speak, up to first level, first floor level.
If I could respond, I think we're being a little dishonest about the stairs here. If I look at your front steps, and I'm speaking, excuse me, to the architect, to the applicant, you have a landing up the steps, correct? So you're referring to 21 steps. The new walk only saves you seven steps from that landing to the front door, correct? 10 steps, okay? So it saves you 10 steps, not 21. And is it not true that the landing is almost equivalent to the same height as the garage door? Would that be accurate? I'm looking at your picture, and it looks like it's actually on almost the exact same level as the garage door. Is that accurate? So it's very...
No, that's not accurate, actually.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's about, I would say, what? Yeah, a good three, four, five feet difference, garage door and our landing towards the walkway. What is, there's at least a four, five, four feet difference, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I always jump on it. Yeah, I remember.
No, thank you, helpful. I just wanted to refer to this comment about 21 steps. We're saving 10 steps, so let's be honest about that. And we have...
You know, the, the point was, like, my mother-in-law has a heart condition. She has a knee replacement going on, so anything that helps, that's all the point.
I absolutely understand. You're putting in a nice slanted walkway that has one, two, three, four, four steps in it, so it's easier for someone to get up who has, you know, an issue walking. It's completely understandable. What I'm talking about is, we talked about getting up to the garage. You already have a landing almost right there, that you would be walking up to anyway, to use what you're proposing to put in. I'm just, you know, again, I'm just trying to think outside the box for you.
I understand.
Yeah, we've, we've certainly been there.
You know, so I guess I'm just trying to say, if this, if this doesn't get passed, that's, you know, that's an option, that you could have that landing feed you straight into the garage, rather than having to build a whole new set of stairs to get to the garage, or whatever you do on the other side of the house, if that's an option. You can just have that landing feed onto a new flattened area in front of the garage, might be another option. But I'm just kind of thinking outside the box here.
Yeah, but that would render the garage useless, no?
No, what I'm saying, excuse me, Tom, is that essentially the landing could just feed down to the garage, so you would just walk down. That would be an easy way, and maybe just for your lives in general, in the future, to avoid having to walk up the driveway. It's an easy way for you to get to the garage from your steps. And just that would be an easy way to create a small landing there, but... Again, I'm just spitballing things right now, if I'm being honest with you.
Well, you're one of the few people in the neighborhood that actually puts a car in that garage?
No, we would, yes, we don't have a car in. The problem is opening the doors once you park it inside.
That's, that's how we got the resident permit, once we showed the picture to the, to the town, how to, that we can't open the door in the garage.
Is, is it, is an option, Tom, that if they're not even using the garage? Oh, no, she said, because she has to go to the state.
Yeah, never mind.
I, I, I don't even need that. Anybody else?
Any members of the public?
That's it? Nobody else in the public? We're going to make a motion to leave this public hearing open until our next meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, folks, so you understand, you'll be coming back next month. Hopefully, Ms. Fox, you will send us the materials that you promised to send, and we will make sure that you get the letters that we have received. Any other points of interest, or anything else? Mr. Scalisi, anybody?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Right, I think it would just say that if there's anything we can do with the, the current plan rep, without making it an entirely new submission, but just skidding it back slightly, we'd certainly be open to that.
Yeah, and thank you for saying that. Look, you know, we're here to help you. You know, we, we're not here to, you know, prevent you from doing something for, to your home. We're trying to help you, so we'll do everything we can within our power to work something out for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, any guidance you have on that, we, you know, hear that.
That's the whole point of this zoning board, you know, it's not to screw you over or anything.
Another, another thing to keep in mind, guys, is that you've already paid for the zoning board, and you've already paid for your application, so any modifications, you, you're allowed, and Bill can correct me if I'm saying anything incorrect here. You know, worst case, this, you know, we have to modify this or something. You've, you've already paid your fees for that, you know, you don't have to go do anything extra after the fact. So you can always come back with new plans, new applications, anything. It's all kind of included already. You're already in front of us, so hang on to that. You know, you don't shut up shop and just...
Yeah. Thank you for saying, thank you.
Okay, anything else? If not, I'll make a motion to close this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night, Tuckahoe.
Night. Night.
All right, everyone.